I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have you on more, she happy that she got your nice crowd and um, she, I think there's some seats in there if you, you're fine, okay, there's a couple of seats in there maybe. Um, so if you have your stand, I'll approve. Okay, with that, the clerk will call the roll.
Bilber?
Here.
Brockmeyer?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Doriso?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Hygird?
Here.
Oswald?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
All members are present. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting if there's, um, if you've got a chance to read them. entertain a motion. Okay, a motion has been made by Alderman Hygird, accepted by Alderman Doriso, that we approve the minutes of previous meeting. Um, all those in favor say aye, all those say no, and it's nice to have it. Um, we'll go ahead and do the reports and Sarah, I'll start with you on the budget.
Expense for general fund, a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Infrastructure fund, two hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Jill?
Public Works Water Fuel Tax, seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Street Fund, uh, seventeen thousand fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Water Fund, one hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents.
You good?
Lake Fund is seven thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Public Safety? Cindy?
Fire, nine thousand four hundred and five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the roll.
Yes?
Just one question.
Yes.
Sir, do you have the breakdown? You don't have one, okay. I make a motion to approve this.
Okay, a motion has been made by Alderman too, accepted by Alderman Doriso, that we approve the, um, reports and the approval of bills, Lake Bill, Lake Ad hoc Watershed, um, all those. The clerk will call the roll on this.
Tim?
Aye.
Oswald?
Aye.
Hygird?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Doriso?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Bilber?
Yes.
Okay, um, it has passed eight to nothing. Correspondents, there is none. Um, under public comment, there's several things I want to, um, mention tonight. Um, Julie Stutz, Julie, where are you? Julie, you were in state. Julie, uh, is our new deputy city clerk. And she started today and we are excited about having her here. Darlene will be, uh, returning at the end of July and these, the two girls and all of us, uh, including Carla and everyone, has been busy, Julie and everything today. So, welcome aboard, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Cameron Strube, where are you? Cameron? Cameron is here. He is working on his citizenship badge, uh, with the, with the scout. So, um, I believe you have to write about this city council meeting and do...
Um, I discuss an issue, or just a topic that was discussed here with the merit badge counselor, which is my assistant scout manager.
Well, Cameron and I had a nice, um, interview, uh, like a couple of weeks ago, Cameron?
Yes.
And he's very interested in city government and government in general. So, nice to have you with, uh, with us. And Dan, thanks for bringing in the long view. Everybody knows Chad, he's, uh, the friendly face at ACE. So, uh, we'd like to have that. Now, um, also, do we have Adam Emery with us tonight? Ah, there is Adam. Well, Adam is another one of our Eagle Scouts and as you've noticed, they keep coming up.
They keep coming and coming.
They keep coming and coming. And we are so fortunate because this community has seen a lot of, uh, nice young men come through here for, uh, with the Eagle Scouts. This was his invitation. And, um, so Adam, if you'll come forth, I'd like to, uh, give you your proclamation honoring you. And what was your big, what was your big, uh, project, Adam?
I fixed up Zion Luthen Cemetery, which is next to NCDV.
Okay.
There's a curtain brush that had grown up and painted a sign and refixed things.
How old are you?
Now.
Uh-huh.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, hmm, okay. I'm just thinking about city work. Just wondering.
Next summer.
Yeah. Tim, you might want to keep an eye on the shining and cleaning up brush or whatever. Um, Adam, whereas the city of Carnivale takes pride in its sense of community and city involvement, and whereas Eagle Scout is obligated to live his life with honor, loyalty, courage, and service, and whereas Adam Joseph Emery, for his Eagle Scout project, renovated the Luther Cemetery, and whereas Adam Joseph Emery's commitment to leadership, service, and the community is reflected in his steady, persistent progress through the ranks to achieve this prestigious award. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and residents of the city of Carnivale, do by, do hereby honor Adam Joseph Emery of Boy Scout Troop 62 on his achievement of attending the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest in Boy Scouts. Signed, uh, the fourth day of June, 2017. Congratulations.
Can someone get a photo for the paper, please?
I'd love to.
Thank you.
Let's go, mom. Congratulations. Sometimes I think moms and dads want to get the, uh, get the award all the time and ask.
All right, there we go.
Oh, wait a minute.
Uh-oh. All right, big smiles. Did my flash go off?
Is it coming in? She's always that fast.
All right, you're good. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Okay, next on the agenda, you'll be, uh, under all business and 319 BMP proposals. It's repaid me...
Welcome to the front.
Ooh, what you, I, you're sure?
Go on. Well, I've got just a couple of quick things under the 319 grant. The first two are, uh, proposals that landowners have come back with on projects. One, Baron Staton, we'd had designed for a while, but he had the property with another landowner and she decided that she didn't want to have anything built. Well, since then, he's acquired the rest of the property and wants to do the project, uh, still, so it was one of the original, uh, designs that we put together. So, we already have the design and everything, uh, together for that. So, Greenwell Excavating Services, uh, Sue Staton, uh, had sent a proposal from, for twenty-seven thousand dollars, nine, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, uh, for the retention basin on that. Uh, also out on Jay Greenwell's property, uh, there was fourteen dry dams that we had done designs for and, uh, an estimate on that from Greenwell Excavating Services was fifteen thousand and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. And of course, the landowners will pay, uh, twenty percent of the total cost as well as twenty percent of engineering and design fees on that. So, I'd like to get a, uh, approval on these two and then I got one more thing for, as far as a reimbursement to...
Yes, a recommendation? Yes. Okay. Um, motion has been made by Alderman Hygird, accepted by Alderman, uh, Doriso, that, uh, the Greenwell property...
Uh, Greenwell and Staton.
Greenwell and Staton. Um, proposals be accepted. Any objections? Hearing none, the clerk will...
Downey? Campbell?
Aye.
Bilber?
Yes.
Tim?
Aye.
Oswald?
Aye.
Hygird?
Aye.
Doriso?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes. Okay, motion is carried, um, for the Greenwell and Staton, um, project.
And then, uh, another one, uh, was completed, uh, the Libra Pond Repair. Uh, it was completed here, uh, the last couple of weeks. Ronnie and Strube was able to get out and verify everything. So, uh, he's going to be due a reimbursement of six thousand eight hundred and six dollars and eighty-three cents. The total project was ninety-three, sixty-seven, and twenty cents. We did talk in the Lake Ad hoc Committee the other night. The contractor did seed the property, but it all washed off in some of the big rains here this year. We were wanting to possibly hold back five hundred dollars, the cost of seeding, out of that reimbursement to ensure that the seeding is done. The next seeding time is this fall. It's broke out separately on the bill as far as what the seeding costs and stuff is. So, the total reimbursement we would be looking for right now is sixty-three oh six and eighty-three cents.
Okay, so a motion to this, yeah? Um, motion has been made by Downey, accepted by Hygird, that we go ahead and accept it on the Libra property. Any questions on that? The clerk will call the roll.
Doriso?
Aye.
Bilber?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Hygird?
Aye.
Oswald?
Motion is carried, it's your...
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Litchfield water proposal and also, um, the study for Litchfield. I'm going to combine those two, that's, uh, because we've got several different things going on here tonight. So, um, I agree Mayor Doherty is here.
Yes, and I have, uh, other representatives with me also.
And as well as several others, right, for Litchfield?
Yes.
Okay, if you'll go ahead and present your proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for allowing me to make this presentation tonight. We have a very big decision to make that's going to impact your community for the next, at least forty years. It'll impact your, not only you and your children, but your children's grandchildren. So, it's very important that you know all the information and you get the total presentation and then we compare apples to apples as Mr. Burton Eddie asked. And my first question would be, and my question, my first, uh, statement would be, did you get, did you have any questions on the proposed contract?
No, there'll have to be some things dicked around with if we, I mean, if we in that normal question, that we, we're not, whatever votes taken, we still got to get down to the final contract language.
Right, absolutely. It's, it was a sample contract that we have, uh, presented with other water districts. But, um, we didn't know if you had a...
Those are your facts and get in there with it.
It is, it is a sample contract and open negotiation, so. I know the rest, the council had a chance to go through it after, but I gave you, uh, a month ago now. And I know if you're anything like my counsel, you've already come with your minds made up as to how you're going to vote, but I ask you to open your minds tonight because there is some information you don't have and, uh, I think it's something to be considered. I'm going to pass these bullet points out. And I've already made a correction on it because I got a chance to see your present water rates as opposed to what I thought they were. A bit higher than what I originally heard. So, I'm going to throw some numbers at you because I think we have the best proposal, not seeing all of the other one. Again, my mind's open to... First of all, um, the Lich, the Carlinville-Litchfield connection proposal is more timely. I'm not sure how many years your lake has left and your water plant has left to be a, an efficient producer of potable water. But, um, the pipeline, it would be, uh, possible within a two-year time. And the materials cost approximately two million. I know, I know you've, you've heard the high end of fifteen million on proposing, the low end of five million for a sixteen-inch dedicated line. And again, those have to be studied. But I know the county will be happy to assist you with right-of-way easements and that type of thing because it only behooves them to make sure that Carlinville is, uh, successful with any type of, uh, expansion in the future. We propose real rates today, not projected, not estimated, with no guarantee. Price from Litchfield is three dollars and ten cents per thousand gallons less...
Sorry, I didn't get that.
Less than Carlinville's current rates. This leaves one million one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars per year to pay for infrastructure and the dedicated line figuring three hundred and sixty-five billion gallons a year. This, the rate from the Jersey Group, Jerseyville Group is thought to be two thousand twelve cents per thousand, more than the Litchfield price. And this will be seven hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars more that your citizens and businesses will have to pay each year with no money left for infrastructure improvements. It is probable that your rates will climb to near six dollars per thousand, which I believe they already are. I didn't know that at the beginning. But there, there is no insurance that you'll have any money left for improvements or, uh, expansion. This would amount to a fifty-seven percent increase to your customers and citizens and a likely loss of businesses and future development. The best chance of economic growth, as you've all heard, all infrastructure should be focused on the Route 108 corridor east towards the interstate and not south towards the listening. The water compatibility is very important. The Litchfield water will mix perfectly with Carlinville water. You can continue to use your treatment facilities to the maximum with a supplement from Litchfield. You'll be able to get more use out of your new two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar valve. And if and when your water supply improves, you can purchase less and less water from Litchfield until, if wanted, you can opt out of any future purchases with a thirty-day notice. We offer a forty-year contract, as you will have with the Jerseyville proposal, I'm sure. And the opt-out gives you security. Your eight-person council will determine the rates and not some unknown board based on a low known price. If federal money is used or bonds are sold for the Jerseyville product, project, the power to set rates will be limited for this board and you'll have one voice. An increase in rates per Litchfield contract is only possible with an increase of rates for our citizens, which we are always hesitant to do. The increased production from our plant will act as a deterrent to any rate increases to anyone, both communities are winners. Your project, the Jerseyville project, is very, um, relatable to what happened in the Chatham area. There, they came, they hooked on with groundwater and they were, uh, told that they were going to pay one price and now they're paying a price much different than that, much higher than that. And they've had a lot of problems with the water quality. Anything else with that to, you can address?
I would just say that, you know, the Village of Chatham opted to disconnect from the city of Springfield due to some other non-water issues like annexation. But when they got into that endeavor, they thought that the water would be less than what City of Springfield was charging them. And by the time they formed the South Sangamon Water Commission and, and Chatham was the primary customer, um, their current rates this year are now over eight dollars per thousand gallons and they're scheduled to go up in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And it just, you know, when they first got into, before the commission was formed, they had a lot rosier projections about what water rates would be. And then as time went on, the cost has gone up substantially. And the, uh, South Sangamon Water Commission is about fifteen miles from the Village of Chatham. A very similar, uh, situation to your distance to Litchfield. One other thing we did learn, um, we're the Litch engineers for Chatham, but the, um, Chatham was considering disconnecting from the South Sangamon Water Commission because of some water quality issues. And they went back and studied the contract, which had been signed with the South Sangamon Water Commission. And it did say they could connect to somebody else's water supply, but they were required to continue to pay toward the bond issue that the South Sangamon Water Commission had incurred as, to, for their debt. So, it, it's very likely that if you sign, uh, sign onto the water commission, you may have a similar type agreement, which requires you to continue to purchase water from them because they will have taken out bonds in order to pay for the, the water system in Jerseyville, so.
Thank you. So, make sure you read the fine print. That's, that your job. I'm sure, I'm sure you will do better. But, um, you're, you're working with hard numbers from Litchfield. The only softening is that the contract's negotiable. So, I want you to all know that. I thank you again for what you presented tonight and I don't, uh, hinder your decision. Let's get the big bucks for it, so.
Thanks, Mayor Doherty. Very good. Thank you. Um, Tim, are you going to present tonight or is it next? Do you have the, is that answer you want?
Oh, no. I put the study for Litchfield on here because I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve up to, and I don't think it will cost ten thousand dollars, but approve up to ten thousand dollars to go ahead with the engineer study to, uh, check the feasibility of the Litchfield proposal. That was recommended, if you remember, by the water committee, that they do that as well as move forward the Jerseyville regional concept. So, I'd like to make the motion that we approve up to ten thousand dollars for that study.
Okay, before we take that motion, I'd like to go ahead and have Tim, um, do his presentation in Max before we do, since Mayor Doherty's already...
Are they part of Litchville? Are you going down to them?
I'm going to answer. I'm going to have both, everybody do their presentation. He won't come down.
We may or may not need something like that, Hannah. I think what she's trying to say, we're very well made, but, see, I don't have any...
Okay. Max, do you want to go first or Tim?
I'll go.
Okay, you want to go next?
On Tuesday night, there was a recommendation made to the Public Works Committee to further on to become part of the regional entity, the Fosterburg Jerseyville Rural Water and the city of Jerseyville possibly. And that's now being moved forward to the council. It was voted on, the Public Works Committee can take it to the council and that's, that's what we're...
That's what you're saying, okay. Your recommendation. Max, is there anything you want to say?
Just without having the benefit of having gone through Litchfield's proposal yet, they raised some very good points and I think it's incumbent on all of you to have a comfort level in whatever direction you're going. To clarify the, the comparisons made with South Sangamon, and that's a tremendous example and it should be used as a case study of how to proceed with such a project or how not to, and use the lessons they've learned. There were some very unrealistic budget projections when that project was initiated. We were all witness to it, ten years prior to its inception. We got to see some of the, the factors and I think Steve hit on it is there were motivations other than the need for a reliable source of water to move that project forward. And I really think that became the compelling thought process irrespective of any budgetary considerations. I think that became the secondary issue. From a designer's standpoint, I think the designers were put in this box that here's your number. You've got to bring this project in for this dollar amount. And it set them up to fail. It really did. They, you look at the treatment train and as engineers, we love redundancy. We want things to work and if there's a failure of one component, we want the system to have a secondary mode of operation. And so, uh, I think the engineers that were designing that plant, lost that luxury because of the budgetary constraints that were placed upon them. So, again, as you move forward on this, it's very important to make sure you have a thorough understanding of the scope of work and what realistic cost projections are and the fact, keep in mind, none of this is going to happen in a one or two-year time span. So, you've got to be able to look forward and within your budget process, be able to account for what that real number's going to be when construction begins. One of the benefits of working rural development, and that's, uh, kind of a comparative contrast against South Sangamon, South Sangamon project was funded through private bond market. And I think, had they gone through the rural development process, I don't know if that project would have gotten off the ground because there are very conditional tests that rural development applies to affordability and to, uh, reasonableness of design and the redundancy issues that we talked about. So, there are multiple layers of scrutiny above just what a bond council will look at for looking at repayment structures. Uh, and a good case in point, those bonds for South Sangamon are backloaded. So, that debt structure continually escalates on increasing amounts of principal as those bonds start to mature. And that's very hard to cash flow, you know, especially if you don't have growth to offset those increased bond payments. When you're looking with rural development, they require you to look at the forty-year life of the note and what the projected water uses. So, we've had very good dialogue with the state engineer in terms of, uh, looking at the different cost variables that come into play, looking at environmental issues and what kind of construction constraints are realistically going to face a project of this nature. And so, I think that's helpful to have a third-party reviewer that takes into account the due diligence and makes sure that, from a fiscal standpoint, the project makes sense. They don't want to back a loser. It's the federal government money you're dealing with and they've got a lot of safeguards involved. So, as you've seen through the, the breadth of this study, uh, they require a lot and as they should because they want to have a good, um, lending, being able to pay back their notes. So, I wouldn't make that comparison. The other very important distinction with the South Sangamon project, from the designer's standpoint, one of the really critical elements that came into play when they were designing that plant is that that water supply was deemed as under the influence. And so, it was essentially rated as a class A plant like you've got now. And so, that meat on the bone, if you will, of where's the advantage to go in groundwater, they really lost that because they had to provide for virus and giardia removal for the potential of those wells being influenced by surface water. And that, again, uh, if you're a groundwater supplier that's not under the influence, you don't have those type of constraints to contend with. And we have a very good history with the, the Jerseyville usage of that aquifer to demonstrate that that's not a concern or a criterion. That's one of the big needle movers, if you will, of what's focused, where this feasible supply is located. And again, that's really hamstrung that South Sangamon plant to operate at optimum efficiency. Uh, it's an ultra filtration plant, I don't know if any of you've been through the plant, but it's an interesting plant. Uh, but again, there are no redundancies, redundant components there. If any one major train fails, it's a critical path and the system's down. Their, uh, mode of softening, if you look at water compatibility and Mayor Doherty talked about that, um, right now you're a lime softened system. And so, your distribution system has taken what we call a set. Uh, and so, it's accustomed to lime scale calcification buildup on the insides of the mains. And if you drastically change the pH of the water coming into that, you will see a reaction within that distribution system. And so, it's, uh, part of the designer's goal is to minimize any adverse impacts when a, a system goes through a change like that. And so, as we've delved into feasible treatment mechanisms, we're basically using the, the treatment model that Jerseyville's employed to date as a lime softening system. And so, we're looking at compatible water in terms of pH, iron and hardness, that's what you're seeing today. So, we don't anticipate that kind of reaction that the Village of Chatham's gone through for these past five years. Uh, and it's been a real struggle. Uh, it's not solely attributable to the South Sangamon water supply. Uh, there have been some administrative, from a management of the distribution system, they simply didn't react when that water turnover occurred and go out and aggressively flush their system. And you've seen the social media blow up and their reaction, uh, they've got a whole faction of people that are rightfully upset because the water quality isn't what they were used to. And that, in large part, or a good part of that was preventable. But again, that's, uh, looking at, at all the components and the facets here, I think it's very important that you, uh, not only look at the findings of the report, but, but ask those questions and look at what are the, the vulnerabilities and, from an administrative standpoint, how much control are you comfortable in seeking? So, there's that element that is a, a factor on the table and that's why this is... So there's that element that is a factor on the table and that's why this discussion being delved into starts with. You know, the original concept was a Carlinville only system. So there's, there are pros and cons. Again, I apologize for not having, uh, any direct read on the proposal put forth by Litchfield to date. But again, from the points that we made tonight, uh, there are some good points that were raised and some factors you need to put in perspective.
Is there questions?
My question is, the South Sangamon entity, how's that created? Does the communities go together and create the community, then borrow the money?
It's, uh, under state statute, there's a codicil that provides for the formation of water commissions. They're treated as a political subdivision. And so there are bond authorities and coming upon them is similar, but not exactly the same as a water district. But part of the benefit is the ability as a municipal entity and as Mayor Doherty talked about, there is a taxation component. Uh, I believe South Sangamon uses a series of alternate revenue bonds, which basically the primary repayment mechanism is through the revenue generation of the commodity. If that falls short, the security is the ability to levy taxes to make up the difference.
So my, my point is, are the cities liable or are they ownership to this entity or is it a separate entity?
It is a separate entity with the security of each of the member communities. So that entity has monthly board meetings. Their board makes the financial decisions. They set their budget. And their members are the representatives from each community that have that input of what is, uh, the desired result from that commission for each of those entities. And so.
Are the cities owners or are they just a customer of this entity?
They're direct customers and their, their ownership basically extends to that.
The liability.
Financial security. That's correct.
I got a question, but partially answer your question, Randy, and correct me if I'm wrong. If we're a member of a commission, we'd be a member. It's like a, an example. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's a corporation and Elaine, you and I are the stockholders. We're the three stockholders. So we vote on what the corporation's going to do and we take care of their business. We each own a third of the corporation. So each community would own, depending on how many there are, two, three or four, a third, a fourth or whatever of the commission per se. Does that basically answer that question?
It does. So again, so let's say, let's just throw another, if I borrowed a hundred million dollars, each entity would own twenty-five million.
Yes and no. The entity owns, owes the.
But you, but we're.
But it's everybody's water, wa- sale of water, that's customers, the income for water sales backs up and pays these bonds.
I understand that the rate, but I'm just saying Russell liable for twenty-five million. It's basically.
Our name's not on the line, is it? It's just the commissions.
Your name's on the line in, in the extent that if the, uh, principal revenue stream doesn't generate enough capital to pay.
Then everybody has to chip in.
That's correct.
Okay. My question along the same lines, why are you asking other towns?
Yes. What if other towns are added later? How do they fit into that?
And the percentages change.
Percentages change.
But the, are they, are they then brought on as part owner there?
That's correct. And then, so they have the same voice. And so, and, and again, there's a multiple different models of how those can be assembled. But in talking of general water commission logic, that's the customer practices that each member has a vote. And so that member is accountable to their representative board and they're the, essentially the liaison that acts on their behalf.
My question, I started answering, directed to you, Max and/or Tim. Has anyone figured approximately what the approximate cost would be to lay a line from here to get to Litchfield's distribution system?
I have not. I think that's what Ms. Tune was talking about tonight, is being able to look at what those numbers are.
I mean, there's a simple math for price per square foot for a certain size pipe, but until, until, until this is done, until Max was, has a chance to study it, I mean, we don't know. But, but as close as I can stand here to tell you, it's going to be a minimum of eight to ten million dollars. I have no idea where you can dream of five. You can look at any engineering study to look up, look at the size of pipe and per square foot and what a price has been put in for easements that the Dakota pipeline took. So, I mean, without going through the whole ten thousand dollar process or up to ten thousand, I don't know that, I don't know that it's, it's not as simple as just per square foot or per.
I thought somebody was supposed to be figuring those numbers for us.
It hasn't been okay. I mean, that, that hasn't been done.
I have a question for Max. Is there any safety concern or what, what's your opinion on this? Because I mean, this is about the running a line to Litchfield. That's going to be coming across pretty close to the same ground that the Dakota Access Pipeline is. And if there should be a rupture in the Dakota line, how would that affect the water line? Would include it? I mean, you know, as an engineer?
Uh, yeah, as an engineer, those are the kind of things that, that we have to take into account when we're sizing pipeline protections. It's a benefit to the designer if you know that particular obstruction is there, so they can account for that. And then it's just an odds game of what are, what's the probability of a failure occurring at that coincidental location.
How is done with the water line? Is there a way to construct a line to, you know, put in extra safeguards knowing that there's an oil line, you know, a half mile away or a quarter mile away or whatever it is?
Is it an absolute guarantee that it won't create a problem for the, the water infrastructure? No, it's not. But there are things that, that you do in terms of pipe debt and casings to try to protect and harbor that infrastructure to, to make it less prone to an event.
And that would just change the whole pricing structure per course, right.
Yes, Randy?
If you have a question, answer that question first.
This is on the same lines of her question. Dakota, the Dakota Pipeline has already crossed many water mains right in this vicinity. And Ronnie Paul can answer, uh, some of these questions. Henningan Water, uh, the Henderson Water District, they had how many pipeline crossings? About thirteen. K O Water District had at least three. Every place where the water main and the, uh, oil pipeline, uh, crossed, the water main is constructed with ductile iron pipe with a shut off valve on each side in event of emergency.
Okay, go back. Randy?
My, my question was back to Tim saying about, you know, you guys are throwing easements in out there. But if you notice in Steve's first proposals, first lines saying using Henderson's, uh, easement and right of ways could definitely lower the costs. Now, I don't know if there's been negotiations or talks of that in play, but that's something we should look at from a city. The Henderson, which is in our district, they run from Henderson Airline all the way north to the east side, to Reader, to Enos, and all around Carlinville. Okay, so an, so an upgrade of Henderson Water Line helps people that live in timber states and all around us that call Carlinville their home. It helps their water rates by lowering Henderson's rates. Okay, these people in Fosterburg and Jerseyville don't live in Chappell, Carlinville. People all around us that have Henderson water now do live in Chappell, Carlinville. So if Henderson would be to get an upgrade and be able to get more volume and lower their rates, it would help a lot of our citizens around us.
Randy?
If Dakota Access or whatever it is has an easement across private property, we want to run a line. Do we need their permission to cross their easement? Don't we?
That's correct.
Do you have no idea how readily giveable that would be from their standpoint?
There is a bureaucracy and a protocol there. It's not an insurmountable issue, but it is an additional permit to obtain. They have an, an engineering group that will review any other utility crossing to make sure it's not going to be a detriment to their asset.
It's different than Dakota coming in. There are already lines there. Now we're, excuse me, cross their easement. That's different.
Yeah, um, I don't really have a question, but when the Litchfield proposal was first talked about, it was talked about that we would buy water for five, for five years and then we'll clean up our lake and then we'll go back to be our own. We won't be a customer. We'll have our own water. Um, I hear all the parts about what Litchfield can do, but the part about cleaning up the lake, nobody has any solutions on where the money to clean up the lake would come from. It's been indicated to me that EPA isn't really wanting people to revamp lakes for water sources. So there is, they're not giving us a lot of money and saying, here, go clean up your lake. So to me, that's part of the puzzle. And we can talk all night about going from Litchfield. I'm still interested in after five years, how do we get back where we're not a customer anymore? And that's, nobody seems to have a solution for that. Manny, you're next.
Okay, that, that issue, this is a four year contract with Litchfield, just like we're a customer of Jerseyville for forty years. You heard Max say that we've become customers. So it's a four year contract either way, buying water. We don't have to go back to our lake. Our Lake Two is viable lake this whole time. Now that gives us forty years to do a study on Lake One. And who knows what, it could be money over a four year period. But I'm just saying, we're not locked in to go back to the lake at any given point.
So Mayor Doherty's next. Okay.
As you'll see on, see on the bullet points that I gave you there, um, you'll see over a million dollars per year markup from the rate you're charging your residents now from what we're going to be charging you. And you'll have a million dollars a year that as a council, you can decide what you want to use that for. And that can be used for cleaning up your lake.
Senator, we also have a distribution system that we have to maintain in order to structure needs with, with that funds. I guess my ultimate concern is what is the end anger? Um, if, because there's no plan, no timeline and no money that I see to rehab the lake. So do we want to be a customer of another municipality for forty years or do we want to be a customer of an entity that we have seated at the table?
Tim, you want to talk about the state's Lake White now, our Lake One, where we're putting the intake valve in?
Where we're, I'm like, where we're sitting with Lake One right now?
Yes, I think they ought to know where we're at.
I think it's, everybody knows it's unusable. Um, Lake Two has already been saved by the EPA. It's a backup source, backup source only, not primary. There was a study that was done, that was presented, uh, Max, give it to everybody that's in attendance here at the board, where you could get it off the EPA website, I think it was two thousand nine, that that study was done. And there was there was six or eight state vendor entities that was involved in that study. So, uh, that study plainly lined out that the siltation problem with Lake One would happen. It happened several years earlier than was expected. That's where we're at now. So coming down on the agenda, um, here we are. Regardless of what we do, what the city does, what decisions made, Lake One is going to need to be put back in service. Intake's going to need to be rehabbed. If we started tomorrow with any which way we go. It's, I mean, every day we're rolling dice, playing roulette, whatever you want to, however you want to perceive it, but that's what's happening. So the intake needs to be proceeded with and regardless of where we go, what we do, what decision is made, that step needs to be taken. There will be no rehab of the lake. There's no such thing as blowing it up, starting over. There's nowhere to take the silt. That would never happen, never be allowed. I don't know, I don't know how we can afford to buy enough ground to haul off whatever contaminated stuff's in the bottom of the lake. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff involved in all this with Lake One. Lake One can be saved. I think Bob Caden's done a great job, him, Ronnie, in trying to save it what they're saving it now. It still needs to be done. The three nineteen grant is pretty much paying for itself. It's not coming out of a million dollars for the city of Carlinville for that. Bob's got proof of what the three nineteen grant's doing, how much it's actually costing the city. So rehab the lake that's taking place needs to take place, needs to continue. That doesn't need shutdown. We're going to, we're going to have, I mean, it, Lake One needs to be put back in service. Lake Two is a backup, considered backup, backup only. That will not change. And, and the study's also shown, and I think you're going to see until Max has already presented to us that, if you want to be a customer for somebody for a few years while you're thinking about rehabbing it or whatever, that's, there's no funding. We had every agency sitting in this room two years ago. So there's no funding for silt removal for drinking that comes straight off, off the city of Carlinville.
Max? We have a lot of questions. I get the impression of what I've been hearing for many, many months. I'm about to draw the conclusion, not being an engineer but a lake person, that Carlinville Lake is non-rehabitable for drinking uh, source. I think the lake, and if, I'm going to ask you something in a minute, but i- if that's true, I think what we want to do is maintain that as a recreational facility the best we can. And the thing of, so if that's true, that's going to cause us to buy water from Litchfield for a long period of time or it's going to cause us to go out and own our own water, be part of water commission, buy water from them or whatever for a long period of time. And if that's going to be the case, eventually we won't have to have a water plant. Is that right, Tim? Once we get, we're buying it permanently from somebody, there's no reason for a water plant, okay? So my question to you, Max and Ronnie Paul, you, being an engineer, is it reasonable to even consider trying to rehabilitate Lake One for drinking purposes?
It's a question of timing. The answer to that is if you're talking about rehabilitating the intake, yes.
I'm talking about rehabilitating it and making it our permanent water supply for the, not, you know, far distant future.
Tim spoke to the, the issues that we were told by the funders of the perpetual funding draw that's required for silt maintenance. And as Tim said, the state, state director from the SDA said, that's not something we want to participate in. So it limits you to private market funding on a perpetual basis because there are recurrent costs to continually pull that sledge down. Tim talked about the siltation projections that were completed in that report and from the soundings that he and Jim have found is that's an accelerated growth from what was projected in that study just eight years ago. So it's, and, and we talked before about just from the, the treatment standpoint of the factors, essentially starting over with the, the plant, the technology you've got today. If you're going to put all the eggs in the basket of we're going to stay with our own maintained surface supply, there are several issues that come into play in terms of the source maintenance for the lake, keeping it dredged out and then upgrading your treatment mechanisms to be able to handle current treatment.
So I mean, unless that's feasible, we're going to be buying water somewhere or we're going to be part of owning our water system somewhere. One of the two folks. I mean, that's, Carlinville Lake's not going to be rehabilitated from what I'm hearing for drinking water source.
And then I can ask a question first. Do we want to be an owner or uh, part of an entity where we're investigated and being a member? Well, that being said, I think we make water in Carlinville, three eighty-three per thousand gallons. Is that right, Max? Is that what Carlinville's rate was?
I apologize. I don't have.
Something like that. But the, you got four options from Jerseyville. One's four eighty-three and all the way down to four oh six. So you're telling every customer in town, you're going to expect at least a dollar thirty, maybe even two dollars more or a dollar more per thousand gallons, okay? Whereas if you go with Litchfield, you're going to go a dollar less. You're getting down to two seventy-three because it's on a two tier system. So you're telling every business and every person in town, I want to be an owner, but I'm going to charge you more rate. I can get you a better deal, but as of right now, because tonight's night, yeah, you might get government money, but you don't know. You're signing the contract to buy the car or not. Grandpa Fred might come in and give you some money, but you might not either. You know, so you don't know that. You've got a photo wants you to know. And tonight we know the rate is four eighty-three and then four oh six. Okay, for the per thousand gallon. And the question to Tim's. And the question to Tim's about using the two fifty-four, why don't we go with Henderson? We've got a north tower out here, we're three hundred and fifty feet of a four-inch line. I know it's not ideal, but we tap in the four-inch line to our north tower, okay? Overnight, it fills our tower. We drain, we fill. It's not going to be ideal, but we totally don't do anything with Lake One. We just let it, so we take the two hundred and fifty-four thousand, and we run off a lake off the north tower and off our south tower until we can get a situation resolved here, so we can get this water situation done.
Okay, I think...
I apologize, this is the first meeting I've been to, and I apologize, but this is very, very, very important. And I think you hit on this. The dollar cost average per thousand gallons, we have businesses in town that are hugely dependent on water usage. There are other business entities that I am aware of that would like to possibly come in this area that would also use a significant number of gallons of water. If we find that the water usage, if we take the higher road, if we take the four dollars and six cent or four eighty-three cent, I am a hundred percent certain that these business opportunities will not come to Carlinville. I'm not saying they're in categorically, but I know that Carlinville's a finalist, and I know that there's many, many jobs in the line here. And if we happen to go with a rate that is ridiculously high compared to what it could be, I know for a fact that we are out of the running for that. That's all I will say.
Tim, you want to address that, and then Cindy right after.
I do. Unless we're going to get this line for free, the way I see it coming from Litchfield, and I already passed a sheet out that had that comparison from years ago, I'm sure the one, if there's a study to be done, will show comparison. But you're talking about a dollar difference, possibly, and there's already other entities wanting into this regional deal, besides what we started discussion from the original four. You're talking the difference of a debt service for an approximation payback without being done, of raising everybody's over minimum water bill to fifty dollars per household. That does not compute to what I just heard, not even close. Because the line coming from Litchfield to here is not going to be given to us for free, it's going to have to be paid, paid for and be put in. You put that debt service in that, and that number is totally different than what's being talked about.
Okay. Cindy, you have a question after Cindy.
That was one of the things that I was going to ask, is that I do think that the number that we see on the paper that Litchfield gave us will be different because we will have debt to approve to get this project done. The other thing I would say is, I don't understand why it's considered a rosy projection to look at the commission, the rural water commission, but it's not to look at the Litchfield contract like we should just accept. I don't think that that's the way it goes. I think there are unknowns in the Litchfield contract, there are unknowns in going with a rural water commission. And if we sit, like, admittedly, I was on the council six years ago, and we sat because we were all scared. And we didn't take any risks, and we didn't have apples to apples, and we didn't have all the facts, and we waited, and now we're six years down the line again. And if we wait until we have every fact, and it's all hard numbers, and we've eliminated every risk, we will never make a decision, and we will sit again. Because there's no way to do that. I mean, to me, in your personal life, if you're going to do a project at your house, there's no way to decide that this is exactly what it's going to cost, and this is exactly how long it's going to take, and that's not possible. So we have to make the best decision that we can, but I don't, I don't feel that it's accurate to be, to have it portrayed that the Litchfield option is hard fact, and it's on paper, and it's all rosy, because I don't, I don't believe that they can project that for us, though I do understand why it'd be of great interest.
Anything you have to add?
I agree with you, Cindy, a hundred percent. We're building a new garage, and I have spent hours and hours and hours researching different things to go on my garage, doors, windows, whatever. And that's why I feel like we owe it to our constituents, and we owe it to Carlinville to look at both sides of the story. Look at the Litchfield option, look at the Jerseyville rural water, regional water. I think Public Works approved to spend some seed money to get maybe some harder numbers. I don't know, I mean, I thought that's what we approved a month ago, was to have Brian Mitchell form the committee to get us those numbers and bring them back. The other night, he said they're going to use the numbers that are in the study, which is the four dollars and six cents, they don't get any federal funding. So, the numbers have already been put out there in a study. These probably are not completely accurate because no study has been done on this. That's why I feel like we need to move forward, maybe instead of fifty thousand dollar seed money for Jerseyville, maybe we do forty for them and ten for the Litchfield study, and get both facts and figures before we jump into something.
Okay. Kim, did you have something?
Basically, the same thing. I agree a hundred percent. We don't have all the facts, and we can't just keep dragging our speed. So we really do need to have the Litchfield study so we know the numbers, so we do have a comparison.
Randy's first, Cindy.
What I'd like to suggest is, I hear Fosterburg has voted to go fifty thousand dollars into this project. We initially put forty thousand into a, in a thirty thousand dollar grant. The Carnival's done its part on the first part action. Why don't we pause, let the fifty thousand with Fosterburg go ahead and run with that? Because there is some unknowns here coming in that could help Carnival drastically change our whole complexity on everything, that we need to make the right decision here, like Pete just said, we don't want to lose something that we might get, okay? That being said, they spend the money to see if their government money and get closer to what the actual number could be. At that same time, we just do like a ninety-eight, let's just pick like September, the first meeting in September, we actually take until then to make a vote, and then we go one way or the other. That gives it enough time for this entity that might come in and change our whole complexity time to change things.
Okay, Deb?
Where's this four-inch line coming from you're talking about?
Everybody's down by the...
Okay, that, why wasn't that brought up before? Every time we do something in this town, there's a group of people that stonewall projects, Betty Project, Depot, on and on. People have got to quit doing stonewalling this and get something done. It's just like, we were told in the committee meeting that if we went with Jerseyville water, the terrorists might attack the water plant over there.
That actually came from Max, you know, whatever meeting, you were Max, and I said, bring in order, and you said, you know, you got the money in the future, and we bring them in, and it's from our water.
Hey, order, I have the floor. Thank you. That's rude. Okay, now, okay, but why wouldn't they attack the Litchfield water plant?
That wasn't brought up.
What kind of security does Litchfield have on their water plant? It's like nobody, it's like everybody else.
Max, I do...
You're stonewalling people, that's what you're doing. It's a group of people in this town that think they own the place. This is Carlinville, not Georgeville, okay? People are tired of this crap. Do something.
Max, I have a question. The entities, and maybe Tim can answer this too, the entities are going to farm anyway, aren't they?
I think so.
Is that correct?
How many are there now?
I think there's two for sure that are committed. The other two, the two in schools, Carlinville and City of Jerseyville, haven't made a decision yet.
What's Jerseyville debate, do you know?
I think they're looking at all their options. Hundred percent, a hundred and eighty degree expected from them.
Okay, Joe?
Cindy and Tim kind of spoke to my point, which was, there's a big difference between water costs coming in and then when you add the debt service on, because that's a whole different thing. It may look real rosy here, as far as the water coming in, but we're going to incur some debt, and it's going to raise those rates as well.
Well, we have the debt plus the two hundred and fifty-four thousand for the intakes, we have the annual data, the data, to act for Carlinville, so we have no way out of that. Okay, yes.
So then, what do we get to move forward today to find out what could be added to possible? A study, right? All right, that's the only way we can move forward and find out for sure the numbers that you guys want.
Cindy, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say that I think that, when I first started on the council this term, it was said to me that there were things that you needed to consider about what your goal is, and then, you want to buy water long-term, or are you going to, you know, be part of an entity that sells water, basically? And I don't think, I'm not opposed to doing whatever the council decides, because that's how it goes, we all get one vote, and then the majority rules. But, over time, we just keep farming out more money and more money in five directions. What if we put all of our resources in one direction, and we just went? And we took a vote, and we went, and we put all of our resources toward one, one way of solving our problem? And I'm not, I'm not discounting that we need to make sure we have information, but I don't believe that what looks perfect immediately is always what looks best in ten years or twenty years, and I just think we have to think about the long-term goal to...
Any other questions? You asked to go to Dordie?
One final thing. The city of Carlinville's going to pay for a water line coming from any direction, one way or another, you're going to be committed to paying for that, because the city of Jerseyville is not going to pay for that, and the rest, I mean, it's basically, you're all in it together. So, it's going to be included in your rates. And, as I stated, there is a margin there, at our price and your current price, for you to afford to do that and to also clean up your lake. And that line would be the linear fee, not the square fee, will be figured on right-of-way property, and the county is going to be flipping over their heels trying to help you do it. So, that's something you need to look at.
I got one more question, Max. Have you been involved with commissions? Okay. If a commission is formed, first of all, I assume there's way back when this water situation coming from over that way has been studied, there's plenty of water there, is that correct? For many, many members of the commission? Okay, if there's three cities who are the initial members, it all gets, or four or five, or whatever it is, and it all gets built up and going strong, and the water's running and everything, what do you do usually? What, and I know you can do whatever you want to do, but what is normally done, once everything's going strong, the debt service has been out, I mean, we're paying on debt service, et cetera, and new members want to come in? Do they pay some type of a fee to catch up with us because of all of what we've done? How does that normally work?
It's a great question, and putting together that type of recruitment formula is typically more of a challenge, and you treat it like a business. You look at your input cost, and you look at your revenue stream, and it's typically, you have certain fixed costs, and then your variable costs relate to how much water you produce. So if you can reduce or increase the participation to cover those fixed costs, the rate for everybody typically trends down.
By new members coming in to lower the existing member's rate? And they can be charged some kind of upfront money, I assume, if that's what...
But we heard the folks from Hennigan talk about the case history on the Gateway system and how many years they went without ever having to do a rate adjustment. And that, I think, is a function of having increased participation as time goes on. But there are multitudes of examples of commissions in service today that have experienced growth through time, that the plant that we designed on Mark Twain Lake was originally a four-point three MGV plant, they're going dozens and dozens of miles out for more than double the initial customer base, they're an eighty-six-hundred gallon a minute plant now. And so, there is a growth potential there. Once that infrastructure is planted in the ground, you typically tend to see scales of economy start to come to bear, where you realize trying to, with your own resources, cover changing federal and state regulations becomes more cost prohibitive than participating on a broader scale.
Okay, Deb?
Just want to make a comment, though, about the Gateway situation, and I would advise or request that anybody who has questions call them. I asked that question in Jerseyville, if you recall. I turned around and asked the gentleman, when they expanded from the original nine, I believe it was nine entities, and they expanded to thirteen. I said, what happened to your rates for your customers? He goes, well, they went up. Of course they went up, because now we have the extra cost of the honey feed. So, he saw my concern, because I thought the whole thing would be exactly what you said. He said they went up, and I wrote myself, I wrote a note on that. I was shocked.
They, I don't know that they went up, when they went from nine to thirteen, they went up after year seven. I don't know when they went from nine users to thirteen.
The question I asked him was, when you added extra customers, what happened to your rates per thousand?
Yeah, I can't tell you that it was when they went from nine users to thirteen.
It just so happened it was in that time frame, is what you're saying?
It took seven years, I remember that it took seven years for them to raise the rates.
Well, Max, that makes sense, I assume, depending on how much infrastructure has to be built to take the new members in. There may be none, there may be a lot, if there's a lot, then you're not, the rates aren't going to go down.
Correct, they went, they went the first seven years adding users, and after that seven years, then they had their, they experienced their first rate increase. So how many, how many users they added in that first seven years, I don't remember.
Okay, Randy, I think you have...
Okay, I want to go back to the incurred debt costs that you had talked about. This is off the Hennigan Associates website. In two thousand and sixteen, they raised seventy-six miles of four-inch to six-inch main and aperture for a cost of two-point-two million dollars. Okay, the seventy-six miles, now Ronnie and I had this conversation, he said, Brady, the cost of pipe per foot is more versus four and six inch. But that's seventy-six miles for two-point-two million. We're talking fifteen miles, you know, I know it's sixteen-inch pipe, but, you know, if they do that for two-point-two, this fifteen-million-dollar number seems awful large, if not, you have to buy all these. But if Henderson's involved in this project here, saying they want to possibly get us past the Kibber estate, that's not very far from Carlinville, you know, where they supply Kibber estate. So we're not talking a long length of line, so I wish we'd go like what Pete said, you know, let's, you know, we don't, we're a finalist in something, and we don't want to screw that up. Why don't we just wait ninety days, let the two entities, that's a hundred thousand dollars they have, to go forward with their project, continue finding out, maybe by then they'll know we'll have government money secured at that point, we'll know a more number, and we'll give time for maybe what Henderson's doing, whatever they're doing, we'll know more then. So we're more of an educated council at that point than we vote.
Kim? Oh, I thought you had to end that. Is there any other comments or questions, any other concerns? Yeah?
I think, I don't know that it's really been answered, how long we're going to have to put up with our current water supply on Litchfield versus the Jerseyville water concept. To me, it's a critical time, we can't wait five, six, seven years for this plant to be built and everything else. I think we need that answer.
Five, two years either way.
Tim, you want to address that? Because what's the intake flow?
No, I'm not talking about the intake, because I don't, I'm, I don't believe our quality of water is good enough, even with the intake valve adjustment, okay? That's where I'm at, because I've seen it. I've got evidence back to two thousand and thirteen, the quality of the water, so...
No, look, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll address the quality of water question, too, while I'm standing up. So happens that our CCR report come out for the last fiscal year, the quality of water has been excellent, we have no problems with quality of water. Is it a struggle with the intake and our raw water source that we have? It is. We've made modifications at the plant, which the engineers that are sitting in the audience have sent great help on that, so. If there was a quality of water issue, we answer to the EPA daily, weekly, monthly, semiannually, on multitudes of tests, so...
That has to be published. That has to be published too, doesn't it?
Boy, it's all published, it's all matter of record, I have to just look on the EPA website if there's a quality issue. So while I'm standing up, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we, from the Public Works Committee meeting, there was a recommendation to move forward to be part of the entity. I'd like to recommend that we do that.
Finish answering Max's question. The predictions, correct me if I'm wrong, Max, but it was five years out for the rural water concept? Once the funding is secured? It's, I don't know, Mayor Darty, how long for you?
We will be. We'll be at County Line, uh, probably by the end of this year.
Well, the, the follow-up to that is, I'm not saying it's the water quality at the source. I, there's something going on with the supplies, the, the transport system and/or the water plant, the way, you know, from the evidence I've seen. Uh, you know, maybe the EPA, I don't know where the EPA tests, I'm not saying those are false results. I'm saying we've got people that have serious issues in their homes at where the water comes into their house.
Mayor, I understand that, uh, Litchfield will be up where they need to be, but how long would it take? Because these events will begin to be secured.
It'd be two to three years, I don't know.
Again, I'm talking right away, the county is gonna bend over backwards to get this one.
Yes, sir?
I would like to make a motion that we recommend that, that we follow what the recommendation of the Public Works Committee is and go with the regional law.
Yes, Bill?
Mayor, I have a motion on the floor. You didn't answer a second, I had hands up.
But the motion has been made.
But can we amend it? That the Public Works Department didn't recommend that we actually end all conversation about the water supply. So let's make the recommendation that we spend the money, get the Litchfield study, leave the regional concept on the table, don't take it off the table. Leave it on the table and come back and compare apples to apples when we get all of our apples and then our apples.
There's never gonna be apples to apples, I don't care what happens.
Well, let's compare one to the other with as much information as we possibly can so that we can make an informed, intelligent decision for our constituents, for everybody in Carlinville, all the water users. I think we owe it to them to at least investigate both our issues. That's my motion.
Okay, your motion?
Ah, sorry.
Did you get it?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a second to that? All right. So does everyone understand the motion?
I don't like it right back.
The motion is to do a study on the Litchfield water proposal with the engineers. Basically, that's it, Beth, even if you're added on stuff, and, and, and not make a decision on it yet. That's what her motion is. Is that right?
Yes.
No, I.
Make, her motion is to make the study and hold off making a decision until we get the study.
And this is, we're still with the ten thousand dollar cap, right? Yes. Okay.
But not follow the, I thought you said follow the recommendation of?
No, 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 she didn't.
No, okay, fine. You wanna hold up on that?
Now you're voting for a proposal to study Litchfield's.
Okay. Everyone understand the motion?
So if you do that, you don't make a decision tonight which way you go. The other thing is if this motion passes, you don't make a decision tonight which way to go. If it doesn't pass, then someone can make a motion which way they want to go and vote on it.
Is that right? Does that mean running on one?
That's the way it works.
No, that isn't quite right. I wanna leave, I'm gonna leave the regional on the table.
Sure, yeah, that's understood.
I don't want to take it off the table.
If you're not, your motion is to do the study. And to not make a decision. Everything's still on the table, all you're doing is making a motion for the study. If that passes, then there's no decision made tonight on which way you go. If that motion fails and you wanna vote on a way to go, Litchfield is a commission, somebody'll have to make a motion and we'll vote on that. You got any questions?
My question is on that. Okay, all right, there's no other comments, clerk will call and roll.
Higer?
Yes.
Doriso?
No.
Campbell?
No.
Downey?
Yes.
Oswald?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Brockmeyer?
No.
Orford? Ma'am?
Um, no. Okay, so the next motion, we believe would entertain a motion to, um,
So no one's being able to.
To go to the regional water. Is there a motion? The motion is being raised by Oswald, set by Doriso, that we go to the regional water plant. Was it the regional water concept? Need to see what the regional water concept. Any questions on that?
I just wanna make sure, this is for the CD line?
No, this is to go, it's to go.
Unbelievable.
Your motion is to go in that direction, is that correct, Sarah?
All right.
Is there a second?
Yeah, so it's second by Doriso. Motion's been made by Oswald, second by, um, Doriso. Okay, uh, clerk will call and roll if there's any questions.
Higer?
No.
Downey?
Yes.
Doriso?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Billbrook?
No.
Oswald?
Aye.
Tim?
Of course.
Okay, that motion is carried five to three. Um, any other questions? All right. Then we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. And that would be, um, Mr.?
Uh, currently, uh, as we all know, the Public Works Committee has been discussing the current takeover operations of Public Works. One of the, um, major issues is we do have, uh, some employees currently employed that, uh, as part of their current, uh, agreement, they would be able to maintain insurance coverage from the time they retire until, um, the Medicare. Uh, so the attorney and I started, I think, talking about six o'clock this morning, and, um, the language is not quite right, that's a, uh, a situation, it's kind of a sticking point, I would think, for everybody here.
Joe, give me a little bit louder, please, I'm troubled here.
Uh, the, the, um, that's kind of a sticking point for the city, because we've made a promise to those employees. I think there's four, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, we have some current retirees, but that wouldn't, wouldn't affect that. So the language is not quite right in the contract yet. So I spoke with, um, the city attorney and the mayor this afternoon, and, uh, Brian, I can never get his last name right, from Wondertainment Kern. Um, and they have agreed to, um, they, they think they can have it ready by Monday, and they've agreed to pay for a special meeting of the city council out of, um, their funding. I talked to the mayor this evening, which he's agreed to call it what she can, thirty-three Alderman, uh, which will be at, at seven PM on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Um, and the proper notices will go out to the media and where the elected at that time. And they have agreed to pay for it out of their pocket. Is that important to them? This is kind of an FYI.
Um, next would be the, uh, compact track loader.
I'd like to wait on, until the next full board meeting for that in July. The same for the wastewater treatment plant repair, which is right under. And that is because we have two other, two others that called us back today that are coming this week to give us a price at the repair that we need to deal.
Okay.
Mr. Burton Huddy, uh, with, could we go with that? I know issues with putting those on the agenda, if we had that information from Monday, since we're already gonna have a meeting, you get it done quicker?
On the agenda.
Okay, so if we can get it done by that, you can ask.
Okay, next is the cash flow. What, yeah?
Um, just because we have several larger-than-usual expenses, um, Joey and I looked at some CDs that are coming due, just to not automatically renew them in August so that we don't have any cash flow issues until all the, uh, property tax money comes in, the real estate tax money comes in. Because that'll cause a, a time, because we have to cover the fire department's, um, loan payment at the end of this month. And so just thinking ahead so that we don't have to cash out a CD and lose money, we're, the finance committee recommended that we not automatically renew those until we know for sure that we don't need money. So I don't, I don't need any of those, but whatever.
Beautiful, isn't it? Okay, is it FYI for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Everyone get them? Next is the, um, intake bill.
Here's the bids that come in on that. Proposals that come in on that, that's where Max had called eight or ten different. And I believe this, this is the only, this is the only one we got. The engineer's estimate, the engineer's estimates on the far left and the following three. And it's my recommendation, we go with the two fifty-four, three sixty-two for that. And I believe that takes a lot of use to.
Because this was coming up, uh, at the time, we were working on budget, but didn't know what the number was gonna be. This is not included in the current budget. But there is sufficient cash available in the infrastructure fund to cover this. It includes taking some that we've been saving. Um, but it's considered a, you know, pretty dire need. And so there is money available to do it, but I did warn the rest of the finance committee that then there will not be extra money in the infrastructure project, the rest of, uh, fund, the rest of the year. This will pretty much take us out to, until more comes in. But with the commitments we already have, because we have the one grant, we have a commitment for, and then the Hennigan project that we have a commitment for. So there is enough money to take this all out of infrastructure and not have to tap into water funds for it. But don't expect any new infrastructure projects the rest of the year. Just will do it.
Bill?
Um, two questions, what could you?
So we need to amend the budget to, to this now.
Uh, two questions, one for Bobby, one for Tim. Do you wanna amend the budget, just the two fifty-four, three six-two? You gotta worry, I know you like even numbers, what number are you asking for?
Two sixty.
Well, no, I would, I would go two fifty, two hundred fifty-five thousand.
Okay, and then?
Just to round it off, yeah.
Okay, and then the next question for Tim, if we get, if this goes through tonight, how long from start to finish before this, uh, could?
There's one person who'll have a lot better handle on that than I will, and he's been in contact with the divers, the company that knew her.
All right, then I'll ask the same thing of, uh, Max.
Looking at a hundred and twenty days, I'd like to get them in at ninety. The prices you see reflect pulling these guys off of existing jobs. Uh, they were all told it's a rush job, gotta get it in. So the long lead time is gonna be the fabrication, the screen itself.
So we're looking at, uh, could be before the summer ends or, or when it's at, I'll leave it.
That's correct.
Ms. Jim?
Can I just get a little, this is, uh, intake valve for Lake One?
Yes.
Okay, just to get it on the record and clear.
Sure.
Mayor, I would, uh, move that we amend the budget, uh, as requested by the budget officer in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to allow for the purchase of the intake valve, I'll make the purchase motion separate.
Okay, motion has been made and by Oswald, seven by Higer. We amend the budget, um, um, to reflect, um, a transfer of then of two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Any other questions on that? Okay, if not, we'll have to call and roll.
Campbell?
Aye.
Billbrook?
No.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Doriso?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Higer?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Joe?
Mayor, I would, uh, then move that we accept the fee price in the amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred sixty dollars from mainstream commercial divers incorporated, uh, Murray, Kentucky, for the, uh, construction and installation of the intake valve at Lake One.
All right. Um, is there a second? Motion has been made by Oswald, seven by Oswald, then Oswald, yeah, we, um, go ahead and amend the budget to reflect, um, the two hundred and fifty-four thousand and change, uh, for the intake valve. If there are any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call and roll.
Tim?
No.
Oswald? Higer?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Doriso?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmeyer?
Yes.
Billbrook?
No.
Six to two? Six to? Okay, motion, uh, has carried six to two. Uh, we'll move on now to the contract amendment. Yeah, um. Ryan? Ryan, this is your amendment, isn't it?
Yes.
I thought maybe, I got mixed up with Litchfield there, I saw you with.
It's been approved by I.D.O., everything that's, uh, probably, if the I, uh, there's money there to reimburse to pay for it out of I.D.O. rights.
Okay.
All we're doing is making, we're making the amendment for the deal in the amount of two hundred forty-nine thousand seventeen.
That's the total.
Okay. Right. Um, Joe?
Mayor, just to be clear, nothing changes as far as the city's portion of anything?
No. Is there a second? Yes.
That question. We just approved like four hundred thousand dollars extra a month ago, a half ago? This is not part of that, this is the extra on top of the extra. What is this for?
This is to, go ahead, Ryan, go ahead and fill it up.
Yeah, this is for the construction oversight of the project.
And that was not included in that four hundred thousand dollars?
That was not included in the four hundred thousand?
No.
So this is an extra two hundred and forty-nine thousand? That's right?
No, no, actually, it'd be, it's an extra seventy-five. That's a, that's the new total for the contract.
The contract, the original contract is seventy, two forty-nine less seventy-five, ninety-one. You're increasing it to seventy-five.
Okay, got it. All right, sorry about that, yes, Joe?
Mayor, then I would, um, move that we, okay, then, so that, I believe it's seventy-four, eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen, I guess, that was, all right, so it's second. Okay, motion has been made by Oswald, seven by Oswald, Oswald, that we amend the contract to reflect the increase of seventy-four thousand, eight seventeen oh one. Any questions on this?
Good question, Mayor. Is this, I, I don't know, is this a normal thing that happens with these contracts? Is, there's additions like this?
Ryan, you're the, you're the contractor, can you answer that?
Uh, yeah, I answered what our role is. We're doing the construction engineering services. And, um, there was a number of hurdles that were encountered during construction that actually increased, uh, the amount of time that the, that the, uh, the work was being constructed. So this, this brings our, our oversight time in line with the contractors', you know, time to complete the construction.
Go ahead.
Could you elaborate on a few of those, um, time factor, what, what played into that? If, um, probably, probably one of the, uh, the hurdles were the, uh, the fiber optic lines that were encountered during construction?
That's a big one.
Was it the gateways?
Yeah, they were, the other, I think, fourteen du- individual ducts in a big. And then, yeah, the peers for the platformer actually had to essentially miss this big fiber duct.
And then, yeah, the piers for the platformer actually had to essentially miss this big fiber duct.
And you did say this does not affect the, uh, cost to the city of Carlinville, correct?
No, this is not costing.
Okay, this is.
You're right.
All right.
No. Okay. Right, local?
Billbrook?
Yes.
Brockmire?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Derozo?
Aye.
Downey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Tim?
Motion is carried at zero. Okay, engineering, uh, for activity delivery service.
Want me to read it?
Yeah.
This is a, this is for a boarder. Work order for a fixed fee, and this is to do with, uh, the grant project, uh, water line installation for standard edition.
Honey, this is yours, Susan, this is for the process.
This is the, the grant administration for the, the, uh, the remaining portions, the remaining alleys that we have to develop at the.
At standard edition.
Standard edition. It had to be, those services had to be procured. And, uh, so we had to go through that process, and then that's the work order for that.
That's the, the sheet that we had to fill out?
Yes, the ones we filled out the other day.
Okay, then we're okay, this is a, already.
This is part of the project.
Okay, so we allow for that at the beginning.
Yes, one of the steps.
This is for in the amount of thirty-one thousand.
Right, and you'll pay, the city will pay twenty-five percent, the grant will pay, uh, seventy-five percent. Mayor, I would move forward with the, uh, of course, that we move forward with the proposal for Henigan on the, uh, compensation statement.
Motion has been made, second? Motion has been made by Alderman, Derozo, seconded by Alderman, Oswald, that we go ahead and, um, approve the, uh, Henigan Associates' work order in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six, five hundred dollars. Um, any questions on that? Not, clerk will call and roll.
Derozo?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brockmire?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Tim?
Aye.
Oswald?
Aye.
Hager?
Yes.
Okay, um, that, this is yours?
Last thing on the, uh, we have, uh, this was approved at the Lake Committee meeting last week. We have a request for a transfer, lease transfer from, um, Sarah and Kim. And I'll, I'll give you the last name later. I can't even pronounce it, to be honest with you. It's got about twenty, uh, letters there.
Those darn consonants.
Uh, so, I'll give you that name here a little bit, but it's, there was a previous owners and the, the lease transfer is to Susan Locke, and the property address is one five three one one Lakeshore Drive. Again, approved, uh, at the Lake Committee. We do have the current septic inspection, and it has been approved, and we do have two thousand sixteen's tax records paid. So, I would like to make a recommendation, uh, a motion to, uh, approve the lease transfer.
To transfer to Susan Locke?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made by Alderman, Derozo, seconded by Alderman, Derozo, that there be a transfer of property, uh, to Susan Locke. Um, if you have the link, any questions on this? If not, clerk will call and roll.
Tim?
Aye.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Oswald?
Aye.
Hager?
Aye.
Brockmire?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.